Please step to the forum, please.
Mrs. Fodor?
Present.
Mr. Kelly? Absent. Mr. Coe?
Present.
Mr. Matt?
Present.
Spalstrini?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Present.
All right, so we have a quorum. We please rise if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with the procedure of this. Good evening, Ms. Lyons. Does anyone sign up to speak today?
We have no other comments.
All right. Fantastic. All right, before you, you have the meeting minutes from March 21st, 2024. Please review them at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I did go over them already with the clerk, but for the sake of having it on the record, number eight in staff reports. There was no streets report that was there, and the paragraph that's there is really under streets. It should be with the police report. And for accounts payable, it's just really a scripter's thing. So 400 for accounts payable A, it was 40348, but in the lower section, it said it was the 288,000. So we need to turn that to 40348. We're paying our staff too much. And then under B, we just need to put that amount, 288,166, because that was missed there. And that's what the scripter's wants. Just that one. That's, that's all.
I found it here too, but it wasn't that exciting. It's just.
The Robin one is a 300.
I had President on when I were talking about the river cutting, so E, which we've also discussed with the clerk. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections already communicated to Ms. Lyons.
So move. Dick. I agree with Madam.
I don't know. Did anybody say anything over here?
Did you say?
No.
Okay, then it wasn't me.
Okay, thank you.
Then we stumble.
Yes, I know, I know.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Holy hell. They'll figure this out one way or another.
Any concerns?
All right, with that, good evening, Mr. Hedger. It's your turn.
Thank you. See if I can follow that.
Yeah, it'll be easy.
We would ask your consideration of a resolution authorizing the village staff to sign the Illinois joint purchasing agreement for rock salt for fiscal year 2025 in an amount of $217,000. We have an agenda supplement in your packet from Mr. Khan and Mr. Starrett. This is a standard procedure every year, but this is the first year we've actually brought it to the board. Dave has been doing this purchasing himself in the past, and once we settled the agreement, it felt like it really needed to come to the board. The challenge was they won't let you print the contract. It's on, it's online. So I printed the beginning of the contract, which you see after the agenda supplement. And just the document, I think you can see that the actual contract itself is in the form. So it does have to be approved tonight though, because the deadline is the eighth, which is Sunday, I believe. So we're going to get it uploaded tomorrow morning. So with that, we would ask for positive consideration.
I seem to remember us approving these years ago. For one reason or another, they stopped, but it's fairly standard. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Just one, the 120% of our previous year's amount, we didn't use much this year, if I remember. So is it 120% of what we've used or what we purchased last year?
Lori?
Thank you, Jones. It's 120% of what we purchased. So in the past, we've only bought about 2,200 tons, 120% of the 2,640 tons. And this just gives us the option to buy up to that. Doesn't require us to, if we need to buy less, we can buy less, but this is the option to buy up.
I think we have to take 80% of what we were, and we can take as much as we want.
Yep, that's 100% right.
So we have to, we have to take 80%, sorry, 80% of the 2,640?
Exactly, of the 2,200.
Of the 2,200.
You're just authorizing the entire amount in case we have to go over. And then if we go over that, like if we needed to purchase, let's say, 3,000 tons, we would either have to purchase that from the same vendor, but it would not be in this cost. It would be, you know, it would be a non-stating.
We've had years where we had to do that.
We have.
We had to get creative toward the end of the season, because nobody has all.
Any other questions?
I entertain a motion approving a resolution authorizing staff to sign the agreement for the Illinois joint purchasing program.
So move.
Okay.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call LaRoe, please?
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Spalstrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Will she pay us 60?
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask your consideration for a resolution to waive the bidding for the purchase of two N suction pumps, other equipment, and installation for the filter building at the wastewater and treatment plant in the amount of $29,888. I'm going to let Ms. Lyons explain this because she's been working with Martha.
So this is not unlike us ordering a truck early just to get our name in the door. These two pumps are in stock available, but they will, and they will hold them for us for installation in fiscal year 2025. So we're essentially encumbered refunds, but we won't incur the expenses until next fiscal year. These items are in the budget for FY25.
Any questions about this? I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution to waive bidding for the purchase of two N suction pumps.
Copy.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you call LaRoe, please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Spalstrini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Will she pay us 60?
Thank you. With that, we would ask for a motion to set a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget for April 18th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m.
You have any questions, comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for the proposed fiscal budget for April 18th, 2024 at 7:00 p.m.
So move.
Questions, comments?
Is it going to be here?
Yes, right here. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Thank you.
With that, I asked Lori tonight to make a presentation on the budget. It's not actually required, but since the budget committee's met twice now and has made some recommendations that we've included in the budget, there've been some other adjustments made. I'd like to have Lori go through the budget for you today, the highlights you have on. I did send electronically to those who view preferred electronic, I sent it just a couple hours ago, but it's also on your, on your table if you'd like to follow along. So with that, we would like a presentation. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts on the budget. There you go.
Right.
Holly has updated her software, and we're still figuring it out. It seems to have it figured out.
So I'm not sure. I'm looking at the presentation, and it's showing the things along the side.
Do you want to go through the presentation on the left-hand side of the bottom right corner, right by the money line?
Sure.
Yeah.
This guy?
Yeah. You want?
Well, yeah.
Otherwise, I can just see the next slide.
You know, we have, we have the paper copies, so.
Okay.
Well, don't you have to click on the yellow line at the top?
Well, I have, like, my screen is shared, but it's not.
Oh, but.
Yeah. So you can see it, but that's all that matters.
I can see it. You guys have to get the extra stuff, the preview along the side.
We have, we have plenty of paper and, and presentation options, so.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah. Okay, so here we are. This is not going to work because I'm going to have to move this page. There we go. All right, I have to get out of presentation.
We're fine. Thank you.
Okay. Tonight's objective is to provide you with an overview of the budget structure and the process. We're going to describe the goals and objectives of the budget, and it says acknowledge two changes, but it's actually a few more than that, since the final budget and Committee of the Hall meeting. With respect to the overview, the village is required to adopt an annual budget before the start of the first, of fiscal, each fiscal year. So the budget must be approved before May 1st. You will make a tentative budget conveniently available for public inspection, which would include putting it at the front counter, having it on our website, and then for anybody that would like to pick up a copy. And that has to be available for public inspection at least 10 days prior to the adoption of the budget. And not less than one week after the publication of the tentative budget. And prior to the final action on the budget, you must hold a public hearing, which you have already set for April 18th. The public hearing and the adoption can happen on the same day. And then the notice of that public hearing must be in a newspaper that has circulation in the village. So tomorrow, I will be giving Karen a public hearing notice for her to send to the Daily Herald to have published, to make that report. This is kind of an overall view of the process. If you start at 12 o'clock, we begin our budget planning in January. You'll look down between 6:00 and 7:30, I would say. There's a red box for the preliminary budget. That's where we're at right now. So we've gone through the first half of the budget process, and we'll be completing the second half, starting, well, ending April 30th, but then beginning the implementation May 1st, obviously. As far as effort goes, there's definitely a whole bunch more effort on the noon to 6th as compared to the 6th at 12. So we're, we're more than halfway through this, this process. We shared with you last year, and I want to share again, the mission that was developed for the village. This was developed by staff. It's to deliver village services in an efficient, equitable, and customer-driven manner with excellence, sustainability, and transparency. To that end, we continue to make technology enhancements in all of the departments. As you know, we began the implementation of our new ERP program. The Police Department continues to do a lot of technology advancements, including some of the records management, and obviously, the virtual is a huge technological enhancement. Even Public Works is getting technology savvy. We are now issuing mobile service orders for water shut-offs, meter reads, special, you know, special work orders that are initiated here at Village Hall and then go out to the Public Works Department. And then the Streets Department also has implemented, implemented some new technology with respect to a NAPA program to keep track of all of the fixes that they're doing to their equipment. In addition, we are being proactive on maintenance and replacement of equipments. We are protecting our key assets, and that, that would include not only putting our trucks inside a garage, but also continuing to do trans voltage surge suppression at our key locations in the Utilities Department. And then we're also taking measures to enhance resident engagement, and the things that come to mind are, like, the Police Department open house for the virtual. We love participating in Trump or Treat at Halloween. Karen is serving cocoa during the winter time, and so, you know, we, we love doing that, being out in the public. Not all about utilities. Okay, and then as far as our goals and objectives, we try to be fiscally responsible, of course. I'm conservative in the revenue estimates and realistic, I believe, in the expense estimates. We analyze the expenditures within each of the departments to formulate the budget. We look for areas to improve efficiencies and utilize funding sources that are available. And then we're obviously making lots of investments in capital projects. Since the meeting with the Budget Committee and the Committee of the Hall, there are several things that have been updated in the budget, in the tentative budget. So those would include revenue updates based on Kane and McHenry County tax extensions. We actually have the tax extensions now, just over $11,000 additional. As, as you know, I make my best guess at the extensions, and then there's always changes in either the EAV, the assessments, and those types of things. And this year was the first where we had an overlap. So we have, our extension is one extension, but it, it covers both Kane and McHenry Counties. So there's some overlap, and it actually obviously increases the amount that we can collect from McHenry County and decreases that, that we can collect from Kane County. And then those revenues are estimated at 98% of the actual extension, just in case there are other changes that, that will happen. We have done private use transfers as recommended by the Budget Committee that will help cover the Police and Street Department capital expenditures. And then we are asking that we continue the garage project to the extent that, do you want to talk about, about that? That includes $200,000 in addition to the 90-plus thousand that has already been authorized this fiscal year for Lamb to do some, do some work.
One of the things that we're going to ask you for direction on now, at this moment, or when Lori's finished, is, without a vote, is whether or not the board would like us to go for referendum in November or spring for the Public Works Garage for the sales tax. That's something that we need to know because we need to start messaging. The Budget Committee twice now has instructed staff, start messaging, we need to get the word out there. So we have. We saw the last newsletter, it had two articles, Mike's column as well as the major article. The Chamber guide will be coming out in a couple weeks, that'll have a major article about Public, the Public Works Garage. There's been a lot of discussion about whether we should go in November or spring. I don't really, I can tell you that our consultant that I engaged today, which was also asked by the Budget Committee, that we engage a consultant to lead us through the process, not just of the referendum. I'm separating these two issues now. The referendum for the Streets Garage and the, excuse me, the referendum for the sales tax for the Streets Garage, not a real timing priority today because that, the earliest would be November. Even then, we wouldn't have to file the referendum until August. We would probably want to start messaging in May sometime. Excuse me, in June sometime. However, the fee increases that you're looking at now, that Lori just described, are substantial. I believe Mr. Kelly asked, they represent about $245 per family, based on the current, the proposed water rates and the fee, the capital fees. So we feel it's important to get that message out there, and you all wanted us to get it out there. So I can pull the trigger as early as tomorrow morning. The mayor has a presentation to the township on Tuesday night, also a presentation to Cambridge Commerce coming up in May. And so we're having a rather, let's say, an extra pumped-up state of the village power pump presentation prepared. That's the first, first deliverable that we'll have on Monday under this new agreement to promote. The main thing that I think is important that you all know tonight is that we'll be voting on the 18th to raise two capital fees, that the Budget Committee's well aware of, that those of you who are not here, though, are not. So I did ask Mr. Kelly to bring me, to give us the minutes for the Budget Committee he has, and what they might be like to distribute those tonight. That'll let you know what they did. But, but what we reflected in the, in the budget Lori's describing to you is what the board, what the committee recommended, and a couple other things that we, changes we made internally, just swapping things around. But for the Public Works Garage, we spent about $94,000, and that's complete now. That's what you authorized us to complete the last time. Essentially, they're finished now. We have the final reports on, and actually, in the copy room there. And, but now, we'd like to keep moving forward, and we'd like to spend another $200,000 during this coming budget year. So Lori's added that to the current budget for '25 to keep us moving in that direction. We can go that far without doing anything in the ground yet. That gets us to the design phase. It doesn't quite get us to a guaranteed maximum price. It would take $400,000 more to get us to that point. This is all part of the design and preparation for building a $10 million building, so it's not, and it's gutsy. So in this budget is $200,000 from the public use, capital fees, and that's an appropriate use for that fund. It's a proper use for that fund. And so that's what, that's one of the things that's in the, one of the changes is in this budget that was not in one of the Budget Committee's. I think, hopefully, that explains why we'd like to keep the Public Works Garage moving. Now, let me describe the referendum and see if I can get some direction on that. We go in November, obviously, there's a lot of people voting in presidential election for the Park District, for the library. They've been, they've been, it's been suggested to them, there'll be a lot of younger families voting, a lot, a lot of young people that use their facilities, so they're going to both be going again as well. Park District again, the library for the first time. It's been suggested that if you go in the spring, well, first of all, if we fail in November, we, there's no waiting period. I confirm that. There's no waiting period. We could go again in April, and it would be April, not March. There's a primary in, in March next spring, and then there's the consolidated election in April. So this would be the same election where the municipal elections are. So I do need some direction from you. If we go in November, we would see funds as early as the following July of '25, if it passes. If we go, if we wait until April, we won't see funds until January of '26. So that, that's another winter we could spend outside. And as I explained at the last meeting, I have now executed the option for the second year of the rental agreement on Trees Unlimited Property, and I've asked if that might be available for a third year, in case the board decides not to go for referendum in November. So I'm looking for some direction now. I think, Mr. Kelly, at the end of the Budget Committee, you did ask, I think we were leaning towards waiting until April, that you did ask if there was a waiting period. So I confirm that there is not a waiting period. So I would like to have some direction on that now. If anybody has any opinions. If not, then we'll just have to go back in another pack. Thoughts about whether we should go in November or April?
My thought would be April. With the presidential election, it'll be volatile. You've got two referendums already that are going to be on the ballot. Personally, I think if there's a third one, they could just go right down, no, 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 because they're irritating that three or something. So my feeling would be to wait until April.
I agree. I think the timing from, oh, yes, we would want to communicate early. I think the most important communication would be from November till April, not as much pre-November. We'd still want to communicate pre-November, but from November to April to separate and explain the differences between referendums the community was just asked to vote on and what this referendum is, and the difference of the types of impacts and who really pays the cost of the referendum so that there's at least an educational period. And it separates us from becoming part of a larger community referendum conversation and getting confused on which one's which. So I would agree with trustee Spalstrini, too.
Any other thoughts from the other trustees?
I'm in agreement.
That's a consensus, and we'll take that. I will tell you that I think three out of the four that were upon the ballot last month did pass, the one that did not was the school district. But three, three sales tax referendums did prove, including Gilbert's, no, like Aurora.
Aurora, I'm letting go.
And Hengry.
And Hengry. So, all right.
If before, if before you go on, just because we're on the topic of that, if, if Mr. Vaselli could kind of comment about the fact, because I don't know how long it's been since the board's had a referendum, what the board members and the board can say. We can't say, vote yes, we can't, you know, so like, maybe just.
If you don't mind, I've asked them to put together a whole package on that.
Okay.
Some guidance for us.
So for right now, just, we're exploring the idea. Thank you.
One thing that the budget, I don't want to speak for the Budget Committee, but I think this board is, of course, is an example, is trying to look elsewhere for funding solutions, right? For funding opportunities, and I think that you'll see coming up here that we're trying to go down everyone of those paths. So if anybody has any questions about funding mechanisms, at this point, it's just, we're leaving no stone unturned trying to find ways to increase revenues for specific projects.
I think I sent you all last week the application. We sent to Senator Durbin, we sent another one. I started sending today, but I'm waiting till we send a couple more. We sent one today to Senator Deppward. Our two congressman's offices are not accepting applications yet, but they're ready to go to. We'll have those out soon. And then we're going to start a lobbying effort, a lot of you helping us to work on, Senator, Congressman Foster's really our key guy. And his office has been great so far.
Just, just so I'm clear, Ms. Lyons, on this second bullet point, then, the 126,000 that was originally recommended, which we may talk about later, is, is what this is referencing, plus an additional now 200,000 that we didn't discuss. So it's 326,000 coming out of public use and going into general bond companies.
It'll be 325. When I added up those, those dollar amounts for the, you know, the roller, the conveyor, it was 125 rather than 126.
That included the, we didn't have on that capital project list an estimation of the lights, so I think that's what put it at the 126, because it was like 36K or something.
It was, we put $30,000 into that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So right, right now, you're at?
320.
325. The next item down is the inclusion of a community sign. Does anybody want to talk about that?
I think the mayor would probably like to.
I can. So one of the things, we got a grant two years ago now from Senator Severson to put a community sign on Corner 72 and State at Hemet Park. And so we were really excited about that, and then we had an opportunity to get some flooding taken care of at Park and Rin, which, which required a match. And so we worked with Senator Severson and said, hey, we really appreciate that you gave us this money for this community sign, but we really need to fix, I don't know, people's houses from flooding. Would you mind if we took that money and used it to qualify for this other federal grant? He was, he was on board with it. But that left a community sign out in, in the dust. And so the Park District has purchased the property at State and Town Center Road, right next, right across the street from ours, and they purchased that property from Crown. And at one of their board meetings recently, they were talking about putting up a digital bulletin board. And so Jay and I got to talking, and I talked, I contacted the Park District. I said, you know, one of the goals that this board had was to replace the sign that got ripped down during the construction of 72 and State, and what if we partnered together and, and put it over on 72 and State? And they were open to the idea. And then in talking further, we had conversations with township and the library, too, or no?
Just the township.
Just the township, and the township's on board as well. So what our kind of, our vision is to share the cost of this project amongst the government bodies, and then with the advancements in technology, without getting too technical, there's a website that they'd be able to go to. They'd all have a login, they'd be able to put their information up, and then we're not, like, managing the sign, per se, and that kind of stuff, and it's in a place that somebody can see it. So that's why, I mean, and it all came to light pretty quick, and everybody jumped on board with it. So we figure, what was the latest cost assessment?
The, the processment we got from Sinorama, first of all, Laura Chirrell had an estimate from them as well, and a couple other quotes. So we'll be going up for quotes again, but it was, it was originally going to be $20,000 for a small sign up here. It's about, it's $40,000 is the quote I got for the one up on 72. Instead of one foot high, LED, it's two feet high, so it's more legible. But these signs have really come down in cost. We were, we thought it'd be $150,000 a couple of years ago, and now we can get a very nice sign for about $40,000. The technology's really improved, and it's easier to operate as well. So this would be, the village would own it, but the Park, the Park District has agreed to help us operate it, if necessary. The Chamber might be involved, so it would be a community sign owned by the village, that they would help share the costs and have a logo that would indicate that they did. So that's the idea is Park District, at this point, the Park District and the village could split it, 20,000 each, and then the township is going to contribute what they can. We're going to invite the Park District, or, excuse me, the library and the department, they would like to speak to.
How much was that a different budget?
$20,000.
So that's why it came out, and it's now up for the board's discussion as well. If the board doesn't want to move forward with something like that, we could certainly remove that cost from this budget. But it was a goal that we all had after that one sign came down, and now finding a way to do it with everybody else at a cheaper cost seems, rather than them putting their own sign up over here where nobody's going to see it. seems, rather than them putting their own sign up over here where nobody's going to see it.
One of the things, Mr. Hedges, in the Budget Committee that, that you expressed was the, that you had presented a balanced budget. What's been taken out to accommodate the 20K? Is this a takeout budget?
Well, there's quite a few other things as well, it's not just the 20K.
So it's no longer going to?
And so what we did was, we also proposed a transfer from public use to cover that 20,000 as well. So the 325 is now 345.
Public use can be used for this, I imagine?
It's for capital projects involving Village Hall, the street department, or the police department.
So this would go under Village Hall?
Do we have the electrical? Because I remember when we were going through the project over there, that they weren't sure, they were supposed to put electrical, they didn't.
Actually, what, Mr. Colton asked us to make sure that ComEd dropped a line for us then, but ComEd won't drop a line until you put a meter there. So, but there's plenty of power over there.
Okay.
We just have to put a meter down before they'll drop a line for us. At their expense, but.
So there's no additional cost for the electrical? 40K all in is the estimation?
Yes, it is right now.
We're hoping that additional sharing, that, you know, the 20,000 will cover everything that's needed from, from the other side.
It's, we're hoping that it's a 20,000 or less conversation.
Yeah, it's really what we're hoping.
The next item on the list is the inclusion of the Historical Society grant at $5,000. That's in the admin budget. The next one was to update village beautification for the pending 2024 reimbursements that will likely be held over due to fiscal year '25. And then finally, our reallocation of expenses within the police department budget to accommodate the purchase of a speed awareness monitoring system. So what we did was, we removed a few items from the budget, we added the speed monitoring item to the budget, and then it's assumed...
Can we just tell everybody what it is? It's one of those, it's one of those trailers with radar on it that tells you what your speed is. Or the speed monitoring device.
Definitely sells me down.
You guys priced up in, up, up in Wisconsin where I go, they've got, you know, speed limit 30, 30 miles an hour. Every one of them has a little solar and a little speed thing underneath that tells you how fast you're going. They're everywhere. They got dozens of them. Is that, would, would that be cheaper than buying a big trailer to have to drag it around?
So...
And they're, they're mobile, they can move?
We, I can check into the prices on those, but the, the nice thing about a mobile one is, you know, it's, it can be driven by where we're getting complaints, you know, where, where we're concerned about speed, and you can Google it for those reasons, but, you know, we can certainly look into the price of those too.
Would that qualify for the grant that you've applied for with this?
I don't know. I know that this trailer does. There is a grant.
So I, I apologize, Ms. Lyons, you didn't get that far, but you guys were applying for a grant to accommodate the cost of some of this, right?
Correct.
So, so...
We can, we can look into what Toby suggests, you know, it's...
Understood.
They're affected as well. Unless people just kind of get used to seeing them all the time.
Oh, they have flashing lights or...
And they move. I mean, the town, the town that I go to has got 1,000 people, they got 30 of them. They're all over the place.
So they can be...
Uh huh. They're, they're signs.
It's just a, it's just an LED thing, your speed is whatever you're doing, and it's got a little solar panel above it to charge it.
The trailers are silver, silver on.
The ones in Wisconsin have a smiley face if you're doing the right speed.
Even or not, I was like...
Chief, what's the cost of one of these?
It's, it's around 12, 13,000 dollars.
Total, or is that the 50%?
No, that's total.
That's total. And then, Ms. Lyons, you said things were taken out to accommodate, or what was removed from the question?
The command desk was removed. There were two items that were completed in fiscal year 2024. That would be the, the door, there's a closet door and some framing around it that was in 2025 that actually got done this year, so we removed that. And then, oh, $500 were taken out of offices.
Okay, so we're talking about 6K?
Yes, 63 and change.
Do we have any questions about any of the changes to the budget before we move on?
Okay, then next. With respect to the general fund revenue assumptions, I utilize the Illinois Municipalities State Shared Revenue Projections. As I mentioned before, I extended the property tax at 98% of the actual extension. There's continuing reduction in the telecom tax. And then a modest increase in video gaming and residential home starts at 175 units. On the next page, page 11, shows that we have $7,551,355 in general fund revenues. It's about 50%. It is actually exactly 50% if you, between property taxes, income tax and sales tax during this fiscal year, and then our other revenues make up the other 50%. But it does show that we have nice diversification in our revenues. The other income at 90% includes transfers that are coming into the fund from other funds. And then, sorry, you get to see how many graphics fit on the page when we go this way. As far as budgeted general fund expenditures, obviously, the bulk of our expenditures are for wages and benefits of our employees, a lot of contractual services, capital outlay and debt service are the next ones, and then commodities and other expenses make up the 100%. Oh, then there's just a nice picture of Charlie and some of the scouts doing some nice community engagement. And then general fund expenditures by department. You can see from here that it's fairly evenly distributed, actually. The street department has a lot more this year than it has in the past simply because the Rin Stormwater Project is in there, and that's over a half a million dollar project. Okay, then on to, let's talk about garbage revenues. I had a picture of a snowplow in there just for fun. Garbage rate changes. I'm proposing an 86 cent change to the non-senior garbage rate. That is, the bulk of the change is that in the contract with Blood Brothers, I believe there's 4 cents in there extra for, for the village. And then the senior rate is going up by 50 cents. I believe that there's 3 cents, it's over the Blood Brothers.
And I think this is, still keeps us under what the initial rates would have been in the previous contract. We're still cheaper.
Down at the bottom, we are still, like, still folded underneath the 20, fiscal year 20 garbage rates for waste management. And now going into utilities. So there's a lovely picture, a spring picture, was a spring picture or a summer picture of the old street water tower?
I know you didn't take that today.
No, it was taken naturally. Okay. And then, as you know, we have proposed, based on the master utility plan, some changes in the charges for utility bills. So the rates reflected for water is a 10% increase or 57 cents per thousand gallons of water. And inflationary increase that is applied typically annually to both water and sewer, on the sewer side, an increase of 23 cents per thousand gallons of water used. We've got the garbage fees in there at 86 cents increase. So ironically, it's darn close between the water and sewer increases for 1,000 gallons of water and the garbage rate increase. And then the capital improvement fee will move from $10 per billing cycle on the water side to $30, and from $10 on the sewer side to $20. So that would be an increase of $30. My rule of thumb was based on 11,000 gallons per household of water usage, resulting in a 200, nearly a $240 annual increase in our customers' water bills, which would be 20, approximately $20 per month. Any questions with respect to that?
I'll just, I'll just add, so this was discussed specifically at one of the Budget Committee and Committee for the Home meetings. The meeting was just dedicated to a discussion on revenue sources and what we needed to do and what it was going to pay for. I think the next line, MBUIF is not accurate, because we didn't have the number.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that just means, it's the same totals on both floor. Yeah, yeah, including that, yeah. Poses with, no, no fees.
There were five fees recommended just for the board, the board's understanding. Two of them were rate increases. If you remember, we also have an ordinance, I believe it's an ordinance, that we have to increase the rates anyway, year after year, on the CPI. So rates are going to go up every year regardless if we add more than what it's supposed to go, but it has to go up to CPI, which I think is the 3.3%.
It was 3.3%, and it's the CPI for Chicago, Naperville and Aurora.
And so...
Yeah, Elgin, sorry, Elgin.
So those rate increases were going to go up. The water increase was a 10% proposal that we agreed to. You can see that's the 57 cents on the 1,000 gallons. And then the water and sewer was a, the re, was the CPI index, the 3.3% increase. So that one, like, that's not because of this budget, that's just, it was, it was going to go up that. The capital improvement fees, though, that was one we talked about for a while, and we identified that just by raising those, the extra $30, it's going to generate almost a million dollars in revenue that would be dedicated to the water and sewer projects per year. When we had EEI present all the work that needed to be done, I think it ends up being 36 million or...
Almost 70 million altogether.
Altogether.
But that's 20 years.
Right. So when we look at just this one increase, while we know that people are not going to be happy with it, it does add a million dollars towards that 70 million dollar worth of capital improvements over 20 years. And it does allow the water and sewer department to start to action some of the items sooner rather than later, so before costs continue to go up. So we felt that that was one that absolutely was just justified in the reasoning why it needed to happen. The fifth proposal that was not recommended by the Budget Committee, and I, everyone should have a copy of the minutes as well, was a motor vehicle B, however we worded it, but it was an extra motor vehicle B. And that was to help cover the cost of the streets garage, because the, there's just not the funds right now to cover the streets garage. It was felt by the Budget Committee that we could not recommend it at this time. The staff and some on this board are pursuing other options to try to find funding for that, as Mr. Hedges was talking about, speaking with other, like, federal officials. So we want to see all of those, as a Budget Committee, we said we wanted to see all of those avenues exhausted, report going back to the community for another fee. And the recommendation was not to go forward with that. So to approve the four, the two rate, the water and sewer increase, but not the motor vehicle. And that if none of these other funding sources come through, the recommendation is for the board at that time, this time next year, to reconsider some type of fee to cover that streets garage, because we have, I think, Mr. Stares had $3 million sitting outside in the elements. So we're either going to continue with my $250,000 plows, or we're going to try to figure out something for a building. So that's why you're not seeing any of the additional, like, motor vehicle. And I just wanted the board to understand the discussion, for those that weren't there, the discussion that was had around the rate increases. Sorry, Mr. Hedges.
That's great, I was just going to say the referendum fee, the primary source of funding at that.
Yeah, and there was, and I don't see it in, oh, you've got it in the next page, sorry. It's a very nice one, so I won't say anything, tell her.
Any questions?
Does anybody up from the Budget Committee have anything to add on those?
No, I mean, I just got agenda.
You were in the, you were in the meetings, so I didn't know if you had anything to add to the meetings that you attended.
It's going to be unpopular, but I don't know how, I don't know how we move forward if we don't do something. It's really what it comes down to.
I mean, raising taxes and rate increases never popular, so.
It'll be important, I mean, there is $45,000 in the budget for messaging. And so therefore, we will get the message out, and, and, you know, Laura always talks about having good clean water, right? So we need to get that message out, so this is important.
I think the other important thing too is, yes, people are going to see increases. Probably another reason not to go to a referendum in November. But the, if you look at it, it really is $19.83 for non-senior discounted or full rate residents. So this does not represent what the cost would be with senior discounts, but those all still apply. But $19.83 a home or business on average that uses 11,000 gallons. So if you don't use 11,000 gallons, your rate's not going to be what you see here.
What's our senior age?
60.
That's just for...
Still, that's, I'm on that total, it does have an effect, so.
Also, when we looked at the capital improvement fee, or whatever it was called throughout other municipalities, this is less than most of our surrounding neighbors.
It's significantly less.
So...
I think, what's Pingree at, 90?
Before a single gallon is pumped.
$91 in the village of Pingree before you use one single gallon of water or sewer.
So I need to, we'll go, we have to be responsible to maintain the village. This is, I mean, that's how we do it.
I mean, you drive around the streets here, and you see that there's potholes that need to be filled. Not that they're not doing their job, but there's potholes that need to be filled, and so people see that kind of stuff. You turn your faucet on every day, and you assume you're going to get clean water. But if you watch the news, there's a lot of municipalities where that's not the case. And I really don't want Hampshire in the news for that kind of stuff. You know, we're already short-staffed, we're already trying to do what we can to, you know, it's tough. But I, I just, I'm, we're, I, I just, I, I am begging all of you, we're going to have, we're going to have to do this, but I cannot be the sole messenger with this. And I'm going to need your help, because it's going to be extremely unpopular.
Mr. Mayor, are some of, like, you're speaking then at the township and the chamber, et cetera, is part of that going to include 70 million for water?
Oh, yes.
So that's part of the, okay.
Yeah, that's why, that's why staff this week acted on the Budget Committee's ask of, let's find somebody to help us through this, knowing that we're going to have to communicate this. And so I've asked staff, actually before, or during the budget process, we need to do a state of the village. We need to, these other communities do it. We need, we need to record it, we need to put it out there, we need to do, you know, people think everything's great until they see something on their bill, and then they go, I pay taxes. Okay, well, you pay 6 cents to us. And so, I mean, and there's, there's, we've had questions about, you know, SSAs, right? People have said, well, no, the village gets the money for paying for the SSA bonds and stuff. And it's, and there's, what I'm getting at is, is some of that's true, some of the stuff you see is true, some of it's not. But right now, what, what's going to happen with this? People are going to write our novel, and we need to clearly write our own novel with this, because if we don't, they're going to. And it's important that people realize that, I mean, what, what's our total budget? There's $8 million, right? And over, and about half of it goes to...
Just the general fund.
Just, just general fund, and, and half of that goes to the police department. Everybody thinks that we're living high on the hog, and we're not. And it takes money, and I, somehow or another, when these decisions are made, people think that the people making these decisions don't have to pay these same bills. And I can tell you, I am not looking forward to my water bill going up, but it's life.
And that messaging is going to be out before we have the first full water bill in the new year.
Yes, so let me just tell you about the timing of that. The first bill will be July 1st, but it'll be retroactive from May 1st, let me say, fiscal year, right? Be specific to dates. So it'll be the first billing cycle, so the first bill we'll see is around July 5th or 6th. It'll be retroactive, be included by June. So, yeah, we want to get that messaging out right away. In fact, we're going to start messaging before the 18th, before you even vote on the 18th, because I think it's important that the, that the citizens know what board's going to be... 18th, because I think it's important that the, that the citizens know what board's going to be voting on. At least that it'll be out there, whether or not they see it or not, whether they show up, that's important. Um, so, yeah, that'll be mentioned in, in the speech to the, uh, our, the property.
It's at the annual, we haven't, just for those of you that don't know, there's an annual town meeting held every single year at the township building, and this year, they're opening it up to all the taxing bodies to give their speech, because typically, they would only allow you to cover what you did the last year. Now, they're changing it to be more like, what'd you do last year, what's the outlook for the future? And so if you guys are not busy, uh, next Tuesday, I forget what time, I think it's seven, uh, it's on, it's on, the township's put it out there, please, attend.
There'll be, we'll be giving all of you some messaging information, this PowerPoint that'll be created, you'll all be able to use that if you have opportunities to use it yourself. So we'll be including you in that, in this overall, um, marketing campaign. So basically, we're going to be messaging Laura through the 15th of July, so when people see they're going, we want to keep messaging for another couple of weeks afterwards so that they understand now that they've gone to see. But probably most of that'll be when they first hear about it.
We, messaging is going to happen pretty much immediately. Are we going to anticipate a larger turnout and potential venue?
Well, keep an eye on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
My comment is, you know, coming from my day job, education and telling people what we're doing with it is key to helping people understand that it's not, you know, so we can have big fancy things, it's so we can maintain the things that we use to give them services that they deserve. And I think that's going to be a key point that we're all going to have to, you know, talk about.
I think you, I think that's a good point, is that in that EEI presentation, I think almost all of it was maintenance and replacement of existing system, it wasn't that new system.
That presentation went to the marketing firm. Today, they're going to be pulling a lot of that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're right, this isn't like we're going to go buy something new with this, this is replacing old.
Because our residents deserve to have, they deserve to have streets that are safe, they deserve to have, you know, and that covers potholes, it covers police protection, it covers a lot of different things, and, and we can't do that without everybody chipping in. And we understand that it hurts, because we're also paying. You know, we get it, but we want to be able to provide the things that we deserve.
I would also ask that the, that the marketing firm include that, um, the big conversation is, we're now, the current residents are paying for all the new development. That, we've heard that over and over and over, and so I'd like some way for them to put it into words so people understand that that's not the case.
You have a conference call with them tomorrow as well?
Well, I'm just, I, I, you're right, I do, I do, you and I do, but does, with that, does the board have any talking points that you guys hear on a regular basis as it comes to the village, you know, as far as fees and that kind of stuff? Because we, you know, to...
I just want to be really clear with the marketing and the communications, so that there's no confusion, because there's been a couple of statements, say, by here tonight that have brought together multiple revenue sources. So when we're talking about capital improvement fees for water and sewer, rate fees for water and sewer, all of that... Only goes to water and sewer, into that EEI, water and sewer presentation. It doesn't go to streets, doesn't go to police. When we talk about the sales tax referendum, that's when we can bring in some of those other things. But I just want to be really, I do not want to confuse the community of what money goes to where, what's being used where. So that would be my ask.
And I think it's really important for residents to understand that we are limited by legislation as far as what funds can be used for what purposes, and that's a very complex thing that John Q. Public and me don't always understand, um, and we rely on, you know, staff to explain that to us so that we understand those things, and we understand why the neighbors don't understand it, why we don't understand it, it's complex. So we need to help people understand where that's coming from and why we can't spend, you know, this particular fund on debt. It's not the same in a household budget.
All I ask is, when you do your state of the, uh, thing, uh, don't keep referring to, uh, speaking on behalf of the board. That, that, I don't like.
Respectfully, that's what I'm here to do.
I understand that, I understand that, but if you keep pounding that away at them, that just opens the door. The way I look at it is, it's kind of throwing us under the bus, now they're going to come to us because you're speaking on behalf of the board. You're speaking on behalf of the village, not the board. The board has their own thoughts, their own processes, you're speaking on behalf and for the village.
Which is run by this board.
Right. I just...
I, I will, I will, I will change or be cognizant of using that phrase, if that's what you're asking.
Well, it also comes, all of us are casting votes, so it's not the village itself casting votes, it's the six of us, plus the mayor in cases of a tie, so, um, and, and we have thought long and hard and struggled, um, with these decisions and had to make them, because it was in the best interest of the village, so. As much as I hate it, I want it to be, the mayor wants to do this. Um, it, it is, it's, it's in the best interest of the village. The one additional point that I would just like to see in the marketing somehow, because I think it is powerful, when you show people that are doing, you know, $20 a month times, you know, six bills, you know, and what that gives us, and how much, I mean, it really did, how much it costs to do the water tower. We wouldn't be able to do that at all. So, I mean, if there's something that they can see what the cost is, that we have to do for the village, and what that fee is, it doesn't cover a third of just the water tower, being rehabbed and refinished and paving and stuff, so. But I think if they saw that, because they see how much comes out of their bill for capital fund, and then the thing you ask, what do you always hear? Yeah, that capital fund, what do they spend it on anyway? Um, is consistent. So to be able to have some kind of a visual to say, you know, $20 a month times, and I'm going to say it was like $225,000 or something, and what was the cost of one big project for the water department, we would, that starts, right, that over three years? So we're spending well more than what's being, coming in. So that would be my only tip.
This fee empowers as enabling the village to do these projects this fiscal year, or something to that effect, right? Like, this is going to, without, if, as previous board members said, if not for this, then these projects will not get done.
You mentioned water towers, and I think it's important, because I've had this come up quite a, not quite, but in passing here and there. Um, you're painting the water tower for $500,000? I've had to explain, no, we're not just painting the water tower, we're rehabbing it, cleaning it, making your water safe for $500,000, but the line item is written as painting water tower.
Until our headwaters...
No, 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 it's to no fault, but that's, but that's what residents see, and then they think, painting that for half a million dollars? No, we're...
In the Budget Committee, until Water and Sewer explained to us what that actually meant, I was in that camp of, give me a hand, can, can. I got it. They said, no, it's actually rehab and re, repainting it, and it's a lot on the inside, too. I'm like, wait, that's not repainting, let's stop saying we're repainting.
I've had to explain this quite a bit to residents, I've even had somebody from Pingree, you're never going to believe what my town's doing, like, here's what they're actually doing with that water tower. And, oh, okay, all right, that makes sense, but like, the, the education is key.
Yeah, and the fact that four years later, it doubled from the $500,000 to $980,000 is what it would cost to do it this year.
We'll use several examples like that.
Yes.
I think using vocabulary that everybody understands will be key.
That's going to be important.
Because a lot of times, what we hear here is just lingo, and then we look like idiots, because we're like, oh, is that even me? I don't know, but, and we come here every two weeks, and we read these packets in advance, and so if I ask my husband to read this, he'd be like, okay, I don't know what that means.
We'll have him be one of our focus groups.
We can get all our, all of our significant others, family members, to be our first focus group, maybe at least get some exposure to us. Of course, they tune us all out.
We'll be, we'll, we'll watch you afterwards.
Does anybody on, on the board have any other comments or questions for Mr. Hedges about the messaging aspect of this? And do you have any other discussion about the, the rate increases?
We'll keep, I'll be sending you emails probably as early as Monday or Tuesday on the messaging stuff, so I'll keep you informed.
You guys will be, this, my understanding, right, we had this conversation, they're going to be armed with more information that they're going to know what to do with, so that they can answer appropriately, you know, as questions are asked and that kind of...
Actually, frequently asked questions is part of it, sort of, yeah, question and answers.
So we're trying to do this as transparently and as openly as, as we can, and with an emphasis on education, to your point.
Can that be connected to the app? Like, for news? I mean, we've got a section for news on the app, so for more information on this, so.
We have a glossary on there? I'm not kidding, can we have a glossary? Like, what does this thing mean? Like, what is this? What does this mean? Like, what, what is public works? What do they do? Like, what is, um, repainting the water tower? What's involved in that? Just so that people can look at it and go, oh, oh, that's what that means. Okay, because the terminology is not always, um, public friendly.
And I appreciate the, the board's input, and I appreciate the staff's, uh, work on all of this and for listening, and let us derail your presentation this night.
Oh, no.
We needed some guys there, thank you.
All right, uh, we're on the last page. Um, so new revenues that we discussed but are not in the current budget would be the sales tax, um, if acceptable to the residents and passed by referendum. This just gives you an idea of, um, when, when we could expect to see money, should it be successful, should the referendum be successful. So the key is, um, the election results have to be certified before the state will accept our ordinance and, um, the election results. So, um, it's possible for something to be submitted by May 1, um, being effective July of that very same year, and then, um, if our, um, submission is October 1 or before, it would be effective, um, in January of the following year. And then with respect to the special census, it's estimated that it'll take between 18 and 20 months after acceptance, um, and payment of the cost estimate. So, um, Mr. Khan is going through the process right now of applying, um, for a cost estimate, that's the first step in this process. So, um, there's $400,000 in his current budget, um, for that purpose.
Signed the letter yesterday, day before.
A question, are any other taxing bodies, um, wanting to chip in on that?
It's, it's only for the village, so we would only be counting village residents.
Sure, right, but, but, but does, will the school district pick up money off of those residents and the fire district?
I don't, I don't, I don't know the, I don't believe it works that way, in the, in the sense that what we're trying to capture are state shared revenues, so the LGDF and, um, uh, there's a piece of motor field tax, income tax, and, and motor field tax are the two pieces, and I'm not aware of other taxing bodies that get their share of state funded money.
Oh, good, if they don't get anything, we're fine, otherwise they, they should kick in.
The other taxing, to, just, I think, I think the question is, is, like, the only, the, the other taxing bodies get the money off of the property taxes of the home and buildings, and then this, we're trying to capture the per resident, and there's not any other taxing body that, that gets any benefit to knowing how many actual people live there.
This is income tax, motor field tax, of sensitive, population driven.
But boy, that would be a great strategy, right? Like, hey, 300.
Yeah.
You've got some point.
But also, that would be something to put on the app in our frequently asked questions, like, why does this matter? So.
Well, there was, during the revenue presentation, there was a good analysis of potential additional revenue and what the ROI metric of this expense was, so that the board knows, because there was a lot of discussion around this special census and how we're going to pay for it. The estimated cost, and I know we don't have the payment of the actual cost estimate, um, but the estimated cost was around $400,000. What you'll notice, and I think staff has done a great job with this, if you look at the operating, or the general fund expenses in your packet tonight, and the general fund income, you'll see that it's actually a negative amount, meaning we're spending more than what we're bringing in for revenue, a little over $400,000. The discussion that had at the Budget Committee meeting was using $400,000 from existing general fund, fund balance, meaning what money we have sitting in the bank or in those areas, our reserves to pay for this, and that the ROI on this would pay that back over plus additional money. With this coming out, and I know the percentage will be a little less, because it was a little less negative last time, um, our fund balance will still be above 30%. So what does that mean? It means that, um, we would have roughly still four months' worth of reserves on hand, should there be some catastrophe where we have no revenue come in whatsoever that we can maintain. That's at or above what the state suggested fund balance is, so even with spending to get the special census, we're still above what the recommendations from the state is on what our reserve fund balances should be. So this, while this is making it look like the overall budget is being presented as a negative budget, it's actually taking out reserve funds, and we're still healthy in those reserve. So that's why the Budget Committee sounded, felt the ROI and the fact we had the reserve funds and balances were healthy is why it was recommended, yeah, let's, let's go with this. So I think it's, what, 1.5 million?
With...
This could result between now and the next census, 1.5 million positive revenue.
Right, right.
Not, not coming from the residents, coming from our state share things, this isn't taxing residents more.
Right.
This is additional funds we would be owed just because we have more residents.
That's correct.
We get a bigger piece of the pie.
Correct. There's a lot, I think, that our streets, our staff can do with 1.5 million dollars a year.
Uh, in total, over, until the certification of the next 20, 30.
Which is about only four years from when we start getting this.
Right.
Yeah. I just wanted to do that back, because if you look at it, you can see, like, wait a second, we budgeted to spend $8 million, but there's 700 something million. Or 700 million in change.
We'll, we'll, um, be continuing to, um, if, if you do authorize the expenditure of the approximately $400,000, we'll continue to evaluate, um, where we're at once we get the original, or the actual cost estimate in, and then the return on investment, so. Um, that was a concern.
The 400k?
No, the, uh, the million, 1.5.
Oh. We're, we're good at keeping it conservative.
All right, that ends our presentation tonight, so thank you very much.
Any other discussion from the board about the budgets, or to staff, or about the messaging? I appreciate your indulgence this evening.
Just a thank you to the staff, the Budget Committee, and everybody else, because this has been a real trying year to kind of figure this all out and try to do it right, and we couldn't do without your help.
Everybody contributed, but this is Laura's thing, she's been doing it for a long time, she knows how to do it well, and she did a great job, and she, she deserves, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, um, thank you to the board, I know this is a, a big pill to swallow. This has been something we've been working toward for the last three years, which was to gather the information, come up with plans, plan for the future, get the board educated so we could educate public and make the right decision for our future. It's taken us three years to get here, this isn't, um, the big payoff, I don't think. This is one of those situations that, you know, you hope that you do all your research, and then it, it's not what you, you're really thinking it was, but I just appreciate all of you sticking with this process and to use Trusty Coats' line to not let us kick this can down the road any further.
But I also don't want us just to sit here and, um, focus only on the fact that there's two rate increases and two fee increases. There's a lot, I don't, I don't know the total number, but there is a ton of capital projects and equipment and things that are coming in to serve the residents of this community, and... If all we ever do is talk about these rate increases or fee increases, we're missing all of the great things that this staff is, is doing. I think that we should be talking about the things like gravy. You know, we're able to, to purchase different aspects, or continue to fund programs, or the fact like, the Hampshire Historical Society, we didn't really talk about it here, but that $5,000 grant, or not grant, but that $5,000 funding that we were able to figure out how to make happen, they actually have a private donor, a not, well, anonymous private donor, who said, if you can raise $10,000, I'll match you 100%. $10,000, that $5,000 gives them that 10,000, that they will now get another 10,000 for. And so there are big impacts around the community. I think we need to focus on those as well. I know tonight we spoke about the fees a little bit, but I would be remiss if I didn't say, like, there's a lot of great things that staff is going to be providing our community because of the budget that's passing, irregardless of the fees.
Well, thank you, Mr. Merritt. Thank you. Next, we have the staff reports. There's a building report, engineering report, and financial report. Please review them at this time, and the staff is eagerly waiting for your questions.
I just have one for Mr. Khan. Have you had conversations with the developers regarding the reduction in March of the new home permits being issued? And if that's a continuing trend they're going to see, because the budget assumes 175 new homes, last year, 131 plus the duplexes? So are we?
We are expecting to have more permits issued in the next few months. What they have submitted in March and April were master plans, the types of homes, or the models, the laws are being reviewed, and once all are approved, they're going to be submitting for permits to each individual. So we should be seeing.
So you, you're estimating that April, May, and June will actually be slightly higher on the, on the single-family homes than what calendar year '23 was?
Correct.
Okay.
So my 175 does include duplexes, so actually not expecting to get as many homes in total in the calendar year. You know, they're kind of hitting, hitting the middle. And this is a very common time when permits do go down as they're waiting for the spring, our ground.
I was just thinking year-over-year, actually.
Actually, the timing is really a lot dependent on weather and also just where they are in the project, the permits and all this infrastructure now. Here, I think it's one permit so far, for the construction, I think, I'm pretty sure it's north, I think.
Brian Holmes.
So those might be the only two permits pulled so far in the new section. I think, I mean, when you say 165, I think we're still going to do a lot more than that this year, so we're still very.
I have a question on the EI report, page 20 of '28, with the Siler Park. Are we paying for this?
No, it's just like any other developer, they have to pay for their, their development costs. Actually, we have pre-con at this table today with Park District and, and, and Tim was here. Yeah, they'll pay for them.
Oh, he comes from Park District, but doesn't come to our meeting, I see that.
They were going to meet.
I'm just kidding, Ken. Just kidding, Ken.
Anytime you ask, I'll be there, Mike.
What is the home construction for Tamms Arms? What does the EI have with the construction of homes?
I'm sorry, I don't.
And their report?
They're continuing to go through new neighborhoods and open up additional lots, so they're having to redo the engineering plans.
I'm just noting that's the phase they're in, you know, we've been reporting on them since they started construction a couple of years ago, and right now, we're not actively out there ourselves right now. They're just in that home construction phase. We'll be doing punch lists and acceptance of improvements when they're ready for that.
We have a lot of work done with the self-storage, the Stanley North one. How, I mean, are they almost done it? I mean, I saw the lights on there, and so they really.
That's a building permit issue, so all that helps.
Is it? Okay.
So they're going to be issued a temporary certificate of occupancy so they can begin operation. There's still some engineering items that are outstanding that they have to address, but they'll be, they're being issued a temporary certificate of occupancy.
And when is that going to?
It'll be either tomorrow or Monday will be issued, once they pay.
They plan to open up, the only thing they're waiting on right now is they have two big gates. You can see the gate poster up there, but the gates haven't arrived yet, and they want to have those up before they have the grant.
Just because of the nature of the business this is, we're confident that those engineering things are going to be taken care of.
Yes, the asphalt has already been submitted, the first cell has been submitted, the EI reviewed it, and then the temporary, with most temporary certificates of occupancy, the deadline or timeline for them to buy by, 60 days, 90 days, what are we thinking is fair and reasonable for them to submit the outstanding items? If they don't, the TCO becomes invalid.
I understand that, but then what I mean by the purpose or nature of this business is, as soon as they have the temporary occupancy, they can start renting out the facility. And if that were to go away because they don't do what they need to do by a certain time, not that I doubt that they will, but if they don't and they can't operate, these are other people's things that are there, not theirs.
Yeah, let me just explain, these are mostly just documentation, things on documents, asphalt drawings and that sort of thing.
Okay, so it's not like, it's not construction, it's not changes, okay. All right.
I have another question on page 17, the monthly report. Can I ask why the monthly average is increasing so dramatically on the plan review time? It used to be about two days, and then it went to three, and now it's up to four for the month, making it 3.39 for the average. What's going on with our inspections?
So especially your plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, the plan review time, what's going on with, why it's taking so much longer?
I know a lot of that time was on the master plans for the new model homes. So we're taking a while, there was a pause when between the developers, Safeboat and the Village discussed the new energy code, and how that fit in everything, so that was a big pause.
Okay.
But I'll double check with Safeboat to see if this can be a continuing thing, or if it's just a.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lines, is there anything that's really out of whack in your report or something that you should draw our attention to?
I promised you that the Village would make their contribution to, you know, the police pension fund, so that has, that's now reflected in the police department details. But no, it's pretty much stand as well.
If you look at the police spending too, once that, that kind of rule was made, it's almost exactly in the budget.
Thank you.
So we have, Mr. Merritt?
All right, we've actually had the accounts payable to personnel, the amount $209.94. Any questions? I undertake a motion to approve the accounts payable to personnel, the amount of $209.94. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt? Ms. Paul Street?
Aye.
Yes, six zero.
Next, we have the regular accounts payable, the amount $299,254 and 8 cents. Any questions?
Page seven.
Page seven, Midwest Pest Control, 1200.
So that was work done at the wastewater treatment plant to control pests.
We made the mistake of telling Mark that we had a mouse over here, and he said it's terrible. He was going to send him over for $200, and we said, no, we'll take care of it. Water Department takes this role pretty seriously.
Any other questions?
Page nine?
Page nine.
Back on their street, the tree for street skate, was that the replacement?
Yes, it was, that's the.
An additional one, right?
Actually, it's a replacement for a, for some tall grass, which was a replacement for a rock, because people kept driving over that one little median in front of Capri Brown.
Okay.
You notice there's a nice, beautiful green tree there now that hopefully people see.
We put grasses out there last year because the director of Park District, she kept hacking into it. And then I was out there last Saturday with the Lions Club dedicated a bench, and one Saturday, Randy came up, he said, we just sit here and watch people drive over there all the time. It's funny, except it destroys their car.
Oh, yeah.
We put the rock out, then we put grass, but then the grass got cut down because of the spring. So finally, we planted a green tree that will be, a temper green, it'll be there year-round, so that's what that is.
It's a stamp, a quick stamp.
Michelle has agreed to decorate it on the Christmas, regardless of.
Very nice.
The Capri Brown, you can, it was just two big boulders, I've seen that. Somebody drove over with a BMW that day, and this torque was on the pole, but they were telling me when they do it, they just speed off as fast as they can because they were so embarrassed, they didn't need to stop. Anyway, that, hopefully that'll save a few bumpers and undercabs.
Okay.
Right below that is uniform, and I'm assuming that's a bunch of uniforms since it's $2,000?
Yeah, that was a new officer outfitting, outfitting.
That's it. Outfitting of an officer, okay.
Anything else? I undertake a motion to approve the regular accounts payable, the amount of $299,254 and 8 cents to be paid on April 4. Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Clerk, can you go over, please?
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Street? Mr. Robinson?
Those were committee reports this evening. Mr. Kelly, do you have anything for the BUC?
BUC will be meeting next week here at 6:30.
A week?
Normal, normal day.
Fantastic, you forgot. I forget.
Wednesday.
I forget everything.
No, I just really want people to write it down, okay, thank you.
It'll be the 10th at 6:30 in Village Hall, located on South Street Street.
You get out that datebook, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Coe, Public Works.
I, I don't have anything. I already referred to Mr. Hedges.
He's working a lot on Public Works garage, you know, but I didn't find it.
He did a great job removing all that snow that melted.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, they had to plow it. You can't just leave it, but.
Mostly it was just a little snow. But the house was out too.
Say again?
Everybody else.
Oh, 100%, yeah, the state was too. I was making a joke.
Like, the state didn't go out the time before, and they had a lot of dogs.
Mr. Kelly, would you like to tell us about the budget?
Budget committee met on, 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 20th, March 20th. Everyone has a copy, print a copy of the notes in front of you, or the minutes, I should say. Apologies for any typos, as I was giving through it quick, so the staff could have it today. And I just, it was our final meeting prior to the budget coming before the board, so I want to thank the budget committee and those that, that participated and committed to all of the discussions. We had a couple of meetings, it was a lot of work. Thank you to the staff for putting together the budget, for walking us through and answering all of our questions, whether before the meeting or after, or I'm enduring. So I appreciate that. In the minutes, you'll see the official recommendations in each section that we covered, as well as at the bottom, that, the vote on what the recommendations were to bring it to the board. That will be in further detail during the budget public hearing and the next board meeting, we actually go through the budget. The board has a chance to make any notes or decisions. At the last meeting, we did have a couple of community members join and express their wishes for us to continue certain programs, and, and we were proud as the budget committee to continue all programs that we've had in this current fiscal budget, maybe creatively or not totally what funding was, but we were able to do that and add one for the Historical Society, which I think was a good thing, to continue to support our community organization. Any questions for me? Anything else from the budget committee, because you both, and then I know President Reed and Trusty Fodor and others were present at some, is anything you want to add?
You covered it.
New business, other announcements?
I have one new business thing, and I thought about it, the tree for street skate. You kind of talked about that this was going to happen, route warranty, now we have a lot of red bricks that come up missing after plow season every year.
He's coming back to redo the whole thing at no cost.
Okay. Is this like a yearly thing?
Well, hopefully not, because he's really proud of what he does, and he was coming, he does all the crosswalks downtown Chicago and the Golden River, people with the plows and all. And Dave called him this week, or last couple of weeks ago, to talk about how to repair it. He said, I'm just going to come out and pay again. He, I remember the contractor, he has a really unique process, but it, it seemed pretty thorough to me, so we'll see how, but he's coming back to redo.
Okay. Is it, is it going to be done the same way? Because then we're just going to be in the same position again.
And if there's something we need to do, I mean, we did, he did tell us, we use rubber blades downtown on our plows, I think it's rubber. Somehow we were careful about the plows downtown because of that, but, and I, Dave's the one who's been talking to him. But I know he's coming back and he's going to make them right, and whether it's the same, it'll be the same process, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that.
Two announcements, well, two, one, one announcement, just to remind everybody that their, the Historical Society is doing their monthly program. That will end, I think, after next, there's, I think, two more after this, but on April 25th, the last Thursday of the month, they are doing a program on dairy farming. And so for anybody that wants to come out for that, they did it on the schools last month, which was really appreciated by a lot of people that were there. Also, I wanted to thank the Historical Society, as well as to let people know, they are actually doing it via Facebook Live now. So if you don't want to go to the event, you just kind of want to watch or listen to it, you can do it. We get a lot, there's a lot of participation by the public on it, because you have people that are kind of, you know, Facebooking, saying, I'm coming to you here from Ohio, thank you so much for this. And they are, you know, alumni and residents of the town for various schools, so I just wanted to highlight that. And then I want to special thanks to Dave Starrett and the Public Works Department for the new street signs that we'll put up along Old Mill. And some of those were very, you're welcome, so faded that you couldn't see, and while I was doing a lot of walking last month in the neighborhoods, I was taking pictures of them and using the app and sending them out, so I think I only did it with two or three, but today or this week, and then we just paid for them, we just authorized payment for them. But this week I noticed them as I went by, all the ones that I have walked by, so I just wanted to recognize that and thank you. It was noticed.
That's great, that's, I like it. They, they really do a great job, because for a long time, there were a lot of street signs, and they really, they really keep up with them now, so that's great. Anybody else? Two things. One is this coming Saturday, the 13th, Sue over at Newman's does her celebrity bartending thing every year where she donates money, all of her tips, to charities. This year, she's donating to Lori Children's Hospital and GABR, Guardian Angel Basset Rescue. And so I quote-unquote celebrity bartended every year since I've been in office. I do have my badges on file with George Clark, in case anybody's curious. But this year, we roped Presidents Zambetti in, as well as President Hoff and President Welson. So Huntley, Burlington, Gilbertson, Hampshire are going to be celebrity bartending, so I teamed up with Mary Kay. And I understand that whoever raises more money gets to take part of it and donate to a charity of their choosing in their community. So if you're not doing anything, it's from 6 to 8 is when we're all going to be doing it, and we understand that there's going to be some King County Board members there coming to support us. And I think Senator Seaberson has already agreed to come, so if you guys aren't doing anything on Saturday night, it would be great to see you there supporting a good cause. Trusty Coe, I think you have some association with the hospital, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I, I, so we're raising the hospital and GABR, so that's good. And then also, I want to make sure you guys check your email, there was an invitation sent to you guys for the May 23rd, which is a Thursday. It's going to, Metro West is holding their meeting here for the first time ever, and I want to extend the invite to all the board or any of the staff that would like to go.
If I could just add to that, Mr. Merritt, it is kind of a tradition at the host community, that most of the board attends if you can, so it'd be really great if you could. I know most of you haven't been to Metro West.
What day is it?
It's kind of, it's, it's a ways away, it's.
It's Thursday, May 23rd, and it's a 5:30. It's Thursday, May twenty-third, and it's at five thirty.
It's a board meeting, that gets it.
We're going to, um, we're, it's going to be at the GABR building, um, Newman's is going to do the bartending, they're getting a, a special event permit, so there's going to be a cash bar, and then El Cito is going to be, uh, doing food, so let us know. Well, we could, we could, we could do this the Hampshire way, trustee Coath, and bring out a cooler, a cooler if you'd like, because I'm, I'm all about it.
I think, if Metro's going out, we should put a hat bar on the back of one of the Public Works trucks.
I think, I think we put it on the, on the GABR patio better.
I think we could figure something out, I think we could figure something out from the board, I don't know, I don't know, we'll figure, we'll figure that part out, Mr. Edges and I work on it.
Maybe there's been a cooler in the back of that, uh, truck for a concrete parade I didn't know about.
We don't, we don't, we don't know anything about. The last, the last person that asked too many questions got pelted with candy. Uh, so anyway, so I, I'd really appreciate if you guys would come, I also want to thank the Lions Club for donating the bench, um, there's a brand new bench downtown, the Lions Club worked really hard to raise money and donated the bench on, on Saturday, um, so I, uh, want to thank them as well.
It's in front of the old Palazzo's, if anyone knows where it is.
Just following that, the Hampshire Lions Club in conjunction with the Burlington's Lions Club, on the twentieth of April, Saturday, twentieth of April, Copper Barrel will be having a meat raffle there, uh, on the Saturday, for anybody that.
The twentieth, right, yeah.
It's being put up on Facebook and other avenues, you'll see the signs around, that's Saturday, April twentieth, at Copper Barrel.
I'm sad to be missing it, I also want to tell the board that, uh, I'm going to, I'm going on my yearly trip to find Ricky Bobby, next, uh, next board meeting, so you'll have the fastest board meeting ever, trustee Coath, uh, I, we have a tradition in this village where it's always the longest-serving trustee that fills in for the mayor if the mayor's out.
You're not first or last.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be that way, but that's, I mean, the board can certainly choose whoever they want to be as temporary chairman, but the tradition has always been, uh, the longest-serving trustee, so in that vein, I'm just clearly communicating to the board any packet, information, or any meeting-related type things, uh, staff is going to work directly with trustee Coath, for something that you guys will choose him to be the temporary chair while I'm gone, you guys can do whatever you want, I'm, I'm not going to be here to stop it, but, uh, but just for, for, uh, staff's, uh, peace of mind, if there is like, just a venue change or something of that nature, or whatever, he's going to be the one. Now, keep them next meeting, April eighteen, so. So, with that.
The proceeds from that meat raffle on the twentieth of April that we are going to go to the Hampshire Village and Food.
Sorry if I cut you off. Okay, all right, all right, I feel so bad now, Bo should do a turn. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, everyone.